Good evening, I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. This is the meeting of the Select Board for, this is today's day Wednesday, May 24. Let's start off with any updates or comments in the Select Board?
So, there has been, brought to the attention of town meeting members and to the Select Board, a newsletter recently, our town administrator commented on it, and I think others may have commented on it or will want to comment on it. It was from something, it was, it was under the title of Black and Brown News, and frankly, I don't know how else to describe the contents, except to use words like scurrilous and also hate-filled. And there is no place in Brookline for the content such as was represented in that newsletter. And I think there is no place in Brookline for those who authored the newsletter to somewhat mockingly appear before us at our previous meeting's public comment segment under what seemed to be assumed names to essentially assert their, their innocence and the innocence of any other organization that might be affiliated because of the similarity of names. And frankly, we need to get to the bottom of those connections. But there is no doubt about the hate, excuse me, racist hate language that was used in the newsletter. And there is no doubt that individuals were targeted by that language who were essentially smeared and subjected to the worst kind of insults. And for no good reason. These are some of the most respectable of Brookline's activists, town meeting members, contributors to the well-being of the town. Several of them were named, their faces were put behind bars. A racist term was used to apply to them. I'm going to mention one in particular because the two of us had a conversation today. And I promised her I would say these words tonight. So Deborah Brown, I hope you're listening. In, in no world did you deserve the treatment that was accorded to you in this newsletter. And in no world did the other people who were treated to the same treatment deserve that. And this has not ended. There's going to have to be a determination made as to the true source of the language that was used, the hate. And then because Brookline is a town where there is no place for hate, we're going to have to do something about it. I don't want to leave the impression anywhere that because some time has passed, nothing is going to be done about this. It's going to take time for something to be done about it. But something will be done about it. And there will be no reward for certain for any individuals who participated in that. And I thank people for taking, for paying attention to these remarks tonight.
Any other comments? I would just like to add, while I agree with John in terms of the characterization of the newsletter, using words that I've only heard deeply sound by racist whites within the Nazi Party, which is actually an experience I had. Still, I think we'd be very careful not to give them too much oxygen, because that's really what they're looking for. An opportunity to disrupt and get us worked up over their hateful language. And while we have to be very clear that we do not accept that their language or their tactics, we just need to be very careful not to give them too much oxygen to continue. Okay, anything else? Public comment?
Oh, we have a laundry to machines. I could not sign on with my laptop tonight, and so I do not have this script in front of me, Devin. Do you have it for me? Would you like to do this?
I don't have it in front of me. But the gist of it is.
The gist of it is. People should, this is a time allotted for public comment. We invite the public to make use of this time. We ask them to observe some common sense rules, which is to, as much as possible, be polite. Do not engage in personal attacks, do not speak personally. And you'll have three minutes. Devin will give you a very polite time cue to let you know when your time is up. And if you have come tonight to make public comment, you're welcome to it. But if you are not here tonight, or not participating in this meeting tonight remotely, you can still make public comment via email. And you can send that to this board as a whole. Or you can communicate with individual members, and their addresses are on the Brookline Select Board website. And I hope I covered everything, Devin. Do we have people for public comment?
The first person signed up for public comment is Mariah Obrega. Mariah has been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon. Mariah Obrega, I'm the School Committee Finance Chair. I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the settlement of collective bargaining obligations related to the public safety contract that was recently decided by the JLMC. It is my understanding, based on conversations I've had, including the conversation we had at the last Town School Partnership Committee, that tonight you'll be voting to at least partially fund the larger-than-anticipated settlement costs using revised state aid that would flow entirely to the town outside of the Town School Partnership. First off, I want to say that I appreciate that you have an unanticipated expense that you were seeking to find resolution for. And I actually have one question and several comments. I'm, I'm going to ask my question and just hope for an answer, and let me know if you won't answer it, I'll go on to my comments. My question is, I recall that there were several million dollars in free cash that weren't allocated this year, and I was wondering why the settlement costs, is there a reason that they can't be funded out of the free cash, the unallocated free cash?
Free cash is a one-time expense. We're looking for, we're looking to, as much as possible, to finance permanent, permanent costs.
Isn't the settlement also, the retroactive settlement also a one-time expense?
It is a one-time expense. We're settling that with ARPA, a combination of ARPA funds, which are also one-time from Select Board accounts that aren't fully exhausted, and the collective bargaining reserve.
Okay. Thank you. My next question, or my, my comments are, so I understand that the Select Board is not seeking to set a precedent with this decision, and that there will be opportunities sought to restore the balance of funding throughout the year. And I endorse both of these decisions, particularly in light of the plan to update the Town School Partnership Allocation Formula over the summer. The right place for these conversations to occur is not unilaterally at the Select Board, but through and at the partnership meeting. And so I appreciate again not setting the precedent. Particularly, the precedent of funding contract overages above the line is something that would need to be discussed. And I would note that PSB is currently negotiating the paraprofessional contract for 2023 to 2026. And if this were to set a precedent, PSB might itself find that it would, as the town is proposing, seek to fund portions that exceeded estimates above the line, as opposed to within the PSB allocation. And I think there's just a great potential for a sort of tragedy of the commons unfolding with this. And so we should be really thinking about this carefully through the Town School Partnership, and again, be discussing these decisions as part of the planned update of the allocation formula. Final comment, I want to share a quote from the coverage of last week's school committee meeting that was provided in Select Board member John Van Scoyac's newsletter that he sent today. As the closing paragraph of a long-form piece on the meeting, Mr. Van Scoyac writes, outgoing BEU President Jessica Schubow told me later that the May 18th showcase of BEU demands won't be their last. Fasten your seatbelts. This type of statement does not help negotiations and is not productive, particularly in the context of, that we are discussing tonight, of how to fund contract settlements and overages. And particularly, as Mr. Van Scoyac tonight may vote to shift funds away from PSB.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm all done. Thank you.
At this time, there are 11 virtual attendees and one in person. No one else is using the hand breeze or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Next on the agenda is a question of approving, but we don't have minutes today. Since our last meeting was yesterday. So miscellaneous items. We have three. Approving a request from Foulish Corner Emergence Association for a sidewalk occupancy permit. Accepting a donation from RPI Station Street LLC for the Brookline Commission for the Arts for an arts maintenance fund. And approving a temporary all alcohol beverages sales license to Laura Vander Sylves for an annual power club dinner to be held on June 21st. Any questions about those miscellaneous items?
Thanks for that, Devin.
Yes, thank you for that donation. We've been getting quite a few, and we appreciate that. We appreciate all of them, and you know, there's a lot going to the arts mission and to do things that would be beneficial to the entire town. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm all of approval of those three items. On third, please indicate by saying aye. John.
Aye.
What, Marion?
Aye.
John, under our mic.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And Gerald.
Good to sit below.
Yeah. That turned my head back and forth. Okay. Fine, next, the MECA's Community Act, Optico's presentation. And we have two people from Optico's and Cara Bruton, who's going to sort of kick off the discussion.
Good evening. My name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. And with me tonight is Maria Morelli from the Planning Department, as well as two folks from Optico's Consultants. Just wait a second. Okay, so we are, this is one of our monthly meetings at the Select Board. I think this is our third update to the Select Board. These are going to get more exciting as we get further closer to our own zoning work, our work deadline of around Labor Day in order to comply with the State MBTA Communities Act regulations and guidelines, but in the calendar year. You can look at the next slide. So for the Select Board, we have text that's over the graphic, but I'm not explaining what this graphic says. What we've been doing is starting most of our presentations with kind of a big picture, understanding that people are entering and finding out about both the state law, as well as a variety of ideas of how to comply with that state law. In addition to work that was done, you know, that was started before COVID. And so this kind of graphic just kind of centers all of us that we recognize that many people listening from home especially might be interested in, you know, when are we going to hear back from the state about whether we can change some of the guidelines, or want to talk about the details of the state's compliance model. Other people want to focus on options beyond Harvard Street for us to comply with the state law. And then there's the Harvard Street Study, which of course overlaps as, as one option for us to comply with the law. And Maria Morelli has been moving that since before COVID, when we met with all of the boards and committee members just before everything shut down. And we were talking about a cross-department study to look at areas to move forward in California. So then when that kernel started, here we are, post-COVID, and now with a deadline. That Harvard Street Study was completed by Maria as far as the analysis went. Looking at what some of those blocks are, that's posted on the town website that's on there, up there. And what we are looking at tonight, because in this slide, is just the Form Based Code. So all these things we are talking about at different meetings, but tonight we are just focused on Form Based Code, which kind of overlaps in a way for us to comply with the state law. We are proposing doing that on Harvard Street, but of course, we will talk about Form Based Code, just kind of generally, as far as I've been interested in our meeting. Okay, next slide. And I will just, this is a slide that we've updated every time we've seen you all at a Select Board meeting. So here we are with the green arrow, it's May 24. In March 15th, we've had something like 260 people at our kickoff virtual meeting for the Harvard Street community kickoff. In the last, since March, we've had, not we, I'm using the royal we, Maria Morelli has led single-handedly dozens of small meetings, sidewalks. She's been invited to neighborhood groups, mothers out front, all kinds of different people, as well as have standing office hours. And that's been a helpful way for us to meet people where they're at, where they're interested in. More formally, we had our first Select Board update with you on March 28. You all wrote the letter to the state asking some questions about guidelines. We have not received a response about that yet. I am in touch with Chris Buckman from DHCD. As recently as late last week, they recognize they're overdue and getting a response to us. They will. Unless they do, they will follow up with the Select Board-appointed MBTA compliance, sorry, Options Committee to kind of workshop or further understand whatever the state response is.
Can I ask a question? It's just been pointed, but we've been in touch with, or are you planning to be in touch with the new Housing Secretary?
I have not thought about doing that. I'd be happy to talk with town administrator Carrie about this way. We might try to go down that.
We don't know how to approach you, but we should give some thought there.
Yeah. Good point. At the April meeting, and Select Board focused on, we look at some of the guideline flexibility. We also had Lincoln Heineman, BIAS Director, and Rashid Belcham talking about some of the property tax questions. And we went over some of the alternative ideas for compliance that were mostly fleshed out through some preliminary workshops that staff held, focused on just exploring the sandbox, looking at other ideas besides Harvard Street. You all appointed a committee that, to look at other options, they have met, we've met three times since then. And there has, Optico's has held their first workshop focused on Harvard Street last week. And as you'll see, just below that green arrow, there's several more planned through, probably early July. And all of these dates are on our town website as well. I want to go back to just above the green arrow to flag that another update for you is that we have hired Marquee Architecture, who's our preservation architecture consultant for the Harvard Street project. We are hiring them to create design standards specifically for Brookline Village National Register District. This is an important side effort, whether or not the town decides to do anything Harvard Street or MBTA. It's important because it's a national registered district that as of today has no local protection and doesn't have any standards in place. If a project goes to come through, there's nothing for us to rely on. So we are thrilled that that is launched, and that is also moving in parallel. And then, let's see, June and July, we, again, are meeting more with the Select Board Applying Committee, continuing to look at different options. We are already testing one idea that the committee has been talking about, which is possibly being able to theoretically comply with the minimum number that we need to just with our multi-family districts. We, the committee has also had many concerns about that, including the idea that because M districts are largely built out, we would see very few units of housing actually built. On the other hand, it's good for us to explore this and understand how it goes to the model so that we could, if we want to, rely on that as a model in combination with other ideas. So we'll see where that goes. Another concern about the M districts, or any other districts across a broad geography, is that when we allow things as of right, then we obviously also have very little control unless we have those standards well-defined. And so on June 3rd, the committee will be doing a sidewalk in the multi-family districts. We flagged several example properties where, although they are few and far between, there's, you know, a dozen or so properties as examples that are currently below the dimensional allowance of M districts. And if we change that to as of right, we'll have a better sense of what impacts they might be for those different neighborhoods. So the first workshop last week, we had more than 60 people attend, which was wonderful with Optico's. We're going to be continuing that for the next couple of weeks. But tonight, we wanted to again kind of make a big rap, start at the beginning about what is Form Based Code? How are we using Optico's, what are the forms that's supposed to be on Harvard Street? So I will stop and turn it over to Jennifer Settle. Optico's, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time here tonight. We're really excited to be here. Today, I'm going to spend the majority of our time interviewing our approach to Harvard Street, highlighting some of the engagement thus far, and then really diving into what are the benefits and components of Form Based Code, including some recent examples that are obviously pointed on. First, I want to acknowledge, of course, why we are here, really here, the support staff to complete the zoning update that provides that five rights to zoning that meets the MBTA statement. Perhaps even more important, right, we are utilizing a form-based zoning approach that can really better ensure quality outcomes and objective design standards that reinforce the character of Harvard Street. This zoning will be in alignment with the policy goals that were established by your resolutions. So while a form-based approach is focused predominantly on the physical design and development standards, we believe that it's the best mechanism for delivering on these policy goals thoughtfully. And we are really passionate about creating zoning that leads to more equitable and more sustainable outcomes. Our goals for the project are really to provide that enforceable design standard that maintains that mainstream character of Harvard Street, really better protects the existing pedestrian environment, as well as the existing housing stuff that you have. We'll show you a few examples of how this works compared to your current zoning. But first, I want to walk you through our, our approach. Right, as Cara mentioned, our work is really building upon this extensive analysis and outreach that has been done by staff so far. I wanted to say it's one of the most detailed and setting this up for success that we've seen. We've done this all over the country, and the work that's been done to set this up successfully is really amazing. So I just want to applaud that. But we, we did start our engagement with a few members and have several more workshops just even next week. We know it's hugely important that the zoning aligns with the desires and the concerns of the living in and around Harvard Street, while also balancing that need to provide new housing opportunities. In order to better facilitate those discussions and really understand the various conditions that exist along Harvard Street, the project area was split into seven sub-sub-study areas, right? Our analysis really focuses on understanding what are those primary ingredients for those different areas that exist who are desired along the corridors. So this becomes the starting point for creating a set of zoning districts that each have an intended form. And it allows us to really dial into the ingredients that people love and value about their neighborhoods. So that was sort of the focus of our, our first engagement, right? So in the first meeting with two of the sub-areas, we heard residents in through both a visual survey as well as a virtual workshop, where participants voiced their preferences and their concerns for those different ingredients. You know, including a discussion of the design and form characteristics that they wanted to see maintained within their sub-area. These were some of the favorite photos from the visual preference survey. Not surprising, but we want to make sure you have not much of the commentary we've heard for first, how the building interacts with the street or the sidewalk, right, what we call the public realm. As well as comments about how the building look and feel, things like materials, shopfront, massing, right? These are aspects that need to be addressed in the zoning code, and it's really the reason why a form-based approach is necessary. I'll get into it a little bit more, but conventional zoning, the zoning that you have now, does not deal very well with the design of the buildings. And definitely doesn't feel very well with how the building interacts with the public realm. Right, so you do not currently have the tools to enforce that good design standards. And I think one of the most important things, I'll end on the topic of the public engagement, is the best comment we've heard was from, from members who said, "I feel more optimistic. I feel more reassured and more hopeful that the Form Based Code can deliver and meet the expectations of MBTA, but also deliver quality outcomes that the residents can, can get behind." We hope that continues, and we certainly are going to do our best to align those two tasks. Alongside that engagement, our technical work, for Megan and I, really starts with an understanding of your existing zoning. Across the corridor, the existing zoning is varied with both business districts, local and general, as well as residential multi-family districts. So we take a really nitty-gritty, close look at the existing zoning to understand what are the standards guiding development today? And do they really reflect both the existing conditions and the desired outcomes? What we find are a lot of barriers that are preventing good outcomes. Standards that are really inconsistent with the existing context. Regulations that are giving you unpredictable outcomes. And restrictions that are limiting the potential infill of, the potential for infill or on, in underutilized lots. So in order to really understand those barriers and the potential solutions, our approach includes lot studies. This is from a different community, but these graphically test or will test your zoning standard on existing lot sizes. So we really try to understand what the code is currently encouraging to be built once you meet all the required regulations for buildable envelope, open space, and parking. And then we start to test different development scenarios. Scenarios that better align with those policy and project goals that we heard earlier. And from there, we can start to reverse engineer the standards. And this method really gives you that predictable outcomes, or that more predictable range. So that testing is really our next step in the process. We got a great, it's always helpful to be on the ground and get a feel for the corridor, even though we've already gotten this really great micro-scale analysis. But in mid-June, we'll present and discuss those site studies with the committee to make sure that the standards that we're considering align with the desires for each sub-area. And then in mid-July, we expect to have a public, public draft with a review period for comment, all so we can have the final adoption by the end of the year. So let's dive into a little bit more about what Form Based Codes are and the components. This type of zoning provides objective standards that better protect and enhance that really great urbanism and architecture that you already have, right? This mandate is saying your zoning needs to potentially support more housing. And we want your regulations to give you the clarity of what that could look like, right? And help guide where and how new development might make sense. It seems really obvious that your zoning should carefully consider the built environment and those built outcomes of your town. So why would we need to discuss a new kind of tool, right? But unfortunately, we know all too well, anyone who maybe has read the zoning code from front to back knows too well. That isn't the case, right? Conventional zoning focuses predominantly on use and metrics that haven't done a very good job of giving us predictable outcomes that really support walkable, thriving environments that we love like Harvard Street. So how do Form Based Codes give you the better outcomes, right, that align with the character of the pace like Harvard Street? We focus on build, well, building form and supporting a mix of housing and uses of all kinds, right? We pay particular attention to the public realm, how that building interacts. And how buildings fit within their context, right? This includes how new construction could deliver and design that enhances Harvard Street and how it's, how it can transition into the surrounding neighborhood and how it sort of jives with the existing context. We really want your code to be proactive in codifying the desired outcomes that you want to see. So to start, this is always a fun part, I want to highlight some of the tools that you currently use, right? The primary one that you use to address the mass of a building is called FAR, right, For Air Ratio, Ratio. The common performance metric that you use to determine the development potential of a site. Uh, the common performance metric that you use to determine the development potential of a site. Right? So it takes the gross floor area of all the buildings on a site and divides it by the lot area. The problem is both of these massings that you see here have the same FAR. In this case, it's, it's three, right? This type of metric really encourages developers to simply max out the FAR. And you end up getting really boxy buildings with little variation in massing, um, and really unpredictable outcomes, right? So to mitigate that, we try to layer on things like height limits. This building along Harvard Street might meet the FAR in height requirements, but it's still a thing giving us really great design outcomes, right? Your current zoning, the second major barrier, that it doesn't give any control of what happens at the street level. Right? So it might say we want commercial use on the ground floor, but it doesn't really go beyond that to say how that should look or how it should interact with the street. The last tool your zoning currently uses that I'll highlight are the setbacks, right? It's at the minimum setback. But again, it doesn't give you very clear outcomes. So both of these buildings meet your current minimum setback. The takeaway is really that your current standards put your planning board and your staff in a precarious position of trying to articulate why one of these buildings feels more like Harvard Street and why the other doesn't, right? Even though they both meet the letter of the law. So those tools are working. We want to look at the components of the form-based code that start to give you more prescriptive design and development standards. First, I'll go through those in more detail. The regulating plan assigns the zoning districts. And various standards submersed within the project area, this will essentially replace your zoning map. But it goes beyond conventional zoning to really identify the intended physical character that reflects the community's vision and the context around it. The next section is really the meat of the development standard, the building form section. In this case, it goes beyond the building height and that buildable envelope that's set by the setbacks. And it really starts to articulate the scale and the massing of the building that are more compatible with the existing context. So some of the standards you see, uh, in the building form standards are about how it relates to its own mom. How it relates to lot size of the font, both in size and placement. It looks at height, including how a building would transition uh, based on what it's adjacent to. And also regulates things like where parking should be located on a site, right? Together, these provide variety in the built form while also encouraging more physical compatibility. The next section that's really critical to include are frontage type standards and help address that public realm. How it relates to the street and sidewalks. So we can't regulate the, the, the public realm necessarily, but we can regulate how the building faces the street and interacts with the street. It's really critical. This is really one of the critical tools of how we can incentivize that active ground for use. Again, this is very different than conventional zoning, right? It's really subjective or dependent on subjective architectural decisions. Um, even if a building might come in and meet the building setbacks of the existing height standards. The form-based zoning for Harvard Street will also include architectural massing and style regulations. Right? Which gives you objective standards for the facade composition. It addresses historic places and these, as well as penetration, right? The windows and opening, the composition of how those work, how much transparency a building might be. Really important tools for a place like Harvard Street. In addition, with the form-based code, you'll see components that are similar to your existing ordinance, right? Form-based also includes supplemental standards for site plan review as well as landscaping, screening and design of parking areas. And finally, right, even though, uh, it's subordinate to that form and those development standards, it includes regulations for use. And so we'll be working closely with our staff to align this and help simplify, um, and understand the uses that are appropriate even under the MBTA mandate. Form-based codes that incorporate these components are becoming more and more common, right? We've got a really good example from Somerville, uh, not too far away. Um, and so we want to quickly highlight two recent codes that, that gave us some picture of how, um, these types of zoning are producing better outcomes than their previously, uh, conventional code. So in, in Davis, California, we did an update to their zoning for their downtown. The goal here was really to produce clear, concise documentation that provided standards for building massing, articulation and frontages with particular attention in this case civic spaces and to where parking and how sign and port on the street.
Can you go back to slide?
Yeah, this one or the one before? This one?
Yeah, definitely. Just let us take a quick look at this.
Yeah, uh, similar to Harvard Street, I think there was a concern for understanding how new infill could be regulated for, for more predictable results. So that scale might be different. Um, certainly the character is different, but it, um, the focus is really on how your downtown can be predictable result for new infill. Uh, so this included, this particular code included a main street medium and a main street large district that set different thresholds for appropriate infill, right? And so it distinguished where a medium-sized main street and a large-sized main street might be more appropriate. It also included neighborhood zones to really address the needs of the area that were supporting the main street, but were predominantly residential only. The next code I'll note is another downtown code for a town, uh, called San Rafael. A critical piece of this code that's similar, I think, to Harvard Street is that it established this visual hierarchy that reinforced the built character of their downtown's really effective neighborhoods. And it shaped new development to be sensitive to the existing urban fabric by really looking at building size and that facade zone, uh, regulation as well as frontage standards. Uh, in this case, we also did architectural massing and facade standards that were really aimed at protecting the downtown's historic resources. And again, being really sensitive to those adjacent residential neighborhoods. This code capitalized on transit risk locations to create new housing. But it calibrated those opportunity sites to enrich the built environment that existed in San Rafael, right? And really focused those efforts on some of those nodes. And then on the other, the theme really maintaining the, the same character. We've done codes for both large and small towns, both urban and rural places, right? So all those appropriate styles and scales, right, change. The goal is really to produce better built outcomes that reinforce a walkable human scale um, that we know is really critical to maintaining the success of our neighborhood main streets. So with that, thank you for your time. These are, you know, again, our next step to really focus on continuing those public engagement. And then producing the public draft so that we can meet that final timeline, uh, for adoption. So I think we have time for, for a few questions now. I'm happy to go back to any of this.
Hi, first, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and helpful. Are, are we going to get a copy of it? That'd be great, yeah. Um, so I had a couple of questions. The first is related to the workshops that you're doing. How are you determining who's invited by these town live workshops? Are they going here towards the neighborhood?
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you, Ms. Warren. I'm Maria Morelli, Senior Planner.
Nice to meet you first.
Yes, it's nice to meet you as well. Um, the way we're phasing it, there are three phases and they are chunking Harvard Street into three segments. We're sending out postcards to Harvard Street, uh, property owners and residents, and then a butter's within six hundred feet of the Harvard Street parcels. We're also communicating with the town meeting members in those precincts.
Okay. And I assume, does that include building owners and?
Yes, absolutely.
And the commercial operators?
Yes, spending a lot of time.
That's correct. Um, the second question I have is, have you had an experience with other communities where I know that we can incentivize use based on design? For example, first floor, high windows interacting with. Have you ever been involved in encouraging certain types of use? So as we start to redesign and build neighborhoods, um, you know, there's, uh, there's a great opportunity to incentivize, build into the code, different types of use, grocery stores, right, uh, butchers.
Yeah.
If you, you, you understand where I'm going, has that, has that been done before? How would you do that?
Yeah, um, you know, both Megan and I and our colleagues, um, our background in architecture, uh, most of us worked, have also worked, uh, not only with public sector clients, but with private sector developers. And we really understand, um, the ins and outs of both construction types, right? And how buildings need to work with different uses. Um, and, and the advantage of that is that we can kind of see down the road of what a building really needs to function successfully and to be feasible for developers to build. Um, and I think that helps us guide these form regulations. I mean, you sort of spoke to it. I think the main read, the main way to incentivize those uses are to set up a building that functions for those use properly. And that includes things like the, the ground floor height, right? It includes things for, you know, if you're poorly built to, to lot size that could facilitate, you know, for example, we've done it where, you know, allowing their uses towards footprints of lots. This is why we calibrate the zoning by lot size. Um, that can support podium buildings, right, of four over one construction. We know what developers are going to go towards that site. Um, and so we can turn the dials up and down to incentivize uh, different uses. Um, but it really, the most effective way we found is through those form, form controls and incentives to give by right.
So much for being answered my question. Which is okay. So it's a, it's a, I think it's a hard question.
It is.
So I, so I, so we have neighborhoods
Yeah.
that are behind our commercial borders, right? And our commercial districts, we have L districts, we have G districts. The L districts are the local businesses. They're meant to serve the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right? So there's a grocery store, there may be a pharmacy, there might be a dry cleaner. I live in a, behind a business district that's, it's starting to turn into just restaurant row, right? We've lost a lot of the core businesses that service the neighborhood and now it's becoming a destination, which is happy to have the business. But in order to create fifteen-minute neighborhoods, you need to have a variety of services, commercial services, and it's not clear to me how we get those.
Sam, I could just address that. Uh, we had, uh, basically, we were in sessions all, all day. And we were incorporating different divisions in the work that we're doing with, with Optico's. And one of, one key player is, um, the Economic Development, um, Long-Term Planning Division. And so what Victor Panag and Will Joyman are looking at really understanding where uses are allowed, where they're prohibited and where they can be encouraged. So we were spending a lot of time looking at the uses taken. So there might be some districts that are zoned to local business where you could not put an urban market. Because an urban market might be looking at a fifteen thousand square foot minimum for a store, but we would have a store at five thousand in our zoning. So there's some practical issues like that.
Size, so you can do it through.
So we can do it through size, that, that, and you want to protect like artist studios or maybe a places where you're having like, um, antique repairs. Those are small businesses where you want to protect those small sizes and they might be zoned for like ten thousand square feet.
That's very helpful. That's a helpful answer. And then my last question has to do with these other options that I know there's another community, I want to say potential options. How does this group, Karen, interact uh, with that? Because you're going to have a similar issue. There's different options. I assume you still want to have workshops and potentially testing. Is that part of this contract or is that a separate?
No, this contract is for Harvard Street.
Just Harvard?
Just Harvard Street.
Okay.
That does not mean that we can't be smart people and say, hey, if we move forward with some combined, you know, select ones, why we come to you monthly, we decide to move forward with some combined piece of, you know, maybe it's just for the sake of today, maybe it's three stories on Harvard Street or four stories of Harvard Street. So we need more units to make up that number. So we've been leaning on our M districts, knowing that we're not going to get this quality across all the neighborhoods of Brookline. But that we might feel okay about using the M districts as a buffer, lifting some of the design work that's been done by Optico's where that's what many feels like that, you know, certain solutions that are developed could also be applied to some other neighborhoods that help.
Can you, okay, let's go to the first one. Miriam has a hand up. I'm going to ask a quick question and get a quick answer.
Yes.
Um, you talked about butters six hundred feet from, uh, Brookline Village. Um, and what we've been concerned about excluding, for example, public housing developments in High Street as well as those ways. And of course, book house and, and could you make sure that?
Yes.
Those are, I think, beyond.
I've been having meetings with some members of the Brooklyn House Authority about Harvard Street and also continuing sidewalks with different contingency courses.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Miriam?
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, uh, so thank you so much for this. Yeah, I assume you can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for this. Uh, very helpful. I just, so I just, my biggest concern is that I don't want us to be doing the minimum. I know this is not the popular, um, discussion, but to me, this is an opportunity for us to do the minimum and then some. And I think Kara, you remember, I brought this up the very first time you presented to us about this, the MBTCA Communities Act. This is really like, what can we do? So I was a little concerned early on when we were talking about the commission a, and it just seemed like we're doing just what we need to do and I want us to do more than that. And so I just hope you could speak a little bit to that.
I'm sure. Miriam, are you talking about the minimum for Harvard Street that Harvard Street is paying lip service to MBT?
Yes, that is exactly what I'm talking about.
That's, that's actually the, the opposite because Harvard Street was chosen because there is at least half the lots. There are about, there are about a hundred twenty parcels on Harvard Street. Half of them are underutilized, which, which means the property owners cannot improve their properties. We, I talk to property owners all the time and been doing that for years. They're frustrated because they cannot improve their properties. Um, the retail might be okay, or it might, they might be suffering. And because the, the FAR keeps the heights effectively at eighteen feet or twenty-eight feet, not the forty and forty-five and fifty feet that they're allowed. So if half those lots are underutilized and we can facilitate they're being improved, of course, that's beyond paying lip service. You can actually see real growth on, on Harvard Street.
I mean, that's what I want to hear. I want real growth on Harvard Street, but also where else? Like, I, I want us to really utilize this to increase housing in Brookline and not just do what we have to for, for them. And maybe this is a bigger question than for you, since this is only about Harvard Street. But I just, for me, that, that, that's what I hope we get out of this.
Okay, Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
Well, I, I just wanted to respond to the last part of Miriam's question. So, um, the committee that you all appointed, um, the charge of that committee was to not just look at theoretical ways for us to get the minimum number, but also to at least prove one option that would likely encourage housing development. So because you've set out that charge, um, the committee has only met three times. Um, but they are, at each meeting, talk about, okay, you know, this M district idea looks like one that we might want to rely on or lean back on, but they are also looking, we've also had conversations such as um, larger parcels, including the Brookline Housing Authority and Brookline Village. Um, other property owners that have already said, you know, we're interested in doing something in the future. So the, the committee is taking that side of work very seriously. Um, and those kind of larger parcels may end up being added to any one of these.
Thank you. Perfect. That's exactly what I was, that's exactly what I was looking here. Thank you.
So, um, a couple of minutes. First of all, a question and then a couple of comments on the presentation if you don't want. Um, you mentioned, um, that, uh, you have a model for a median, medium-sized development downtown, uh, you know, four stories, whatever. Um, but when you have multiple forms, one, I mean, one of the things is you don't want all of those looking exactly alike in that how beautiful they may be. So you do, you provide some multiple, multiple forms that are.
Yeah, and part of the process of testing is to really understand what's that appropriate rate? We love variety. Harvard Street has variety documented, right? Um, what's that appropriate range?
Yeah.
To provide both flexibility and diversity, um, but also predictable results that are within the scale. So, yes.
Um, a comment for Kara and, and, uh, Miriam, it's, I don't, you may be doing this, but when you mentioned property owners and, and households and so forth. It's really important for candidates.
Yes.
And it's very important, especially this. Um, the, uh, second thing is, um, I, so I, every time that I communicate with Kara, really. I, so I, every time that I communicate with Kara, Maria, I'm very much a fan, very much. And I've said, please show examples of form based zoning early. So you have Davis and San Rafael as examples in there, but it takes a while to get them. And this is, I was a consultant for 30 years and I know there's an enormous tendency to talk about all the things you've done up until the point that you get to the, to the meat of the, the target. All the things you've done honestly don't matter. It's what you're going to deliver to the client, that the client wants to see. And so please put those in earlier in the presentation. And you want people who don't have the foggiest idea about what's this form based zoning all about. You want to show them a picture. Not a list of things that you've done.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah, noted, that's.
Okay. One time I had an engagement with Polaroid, sent them like, I don't know, doesn't slide to something for a row for the short thing. And the person came back and said, well, we don't, you know, people don't have that patience. We, we condensed it to one slide. The slide had a time bomb. They had to do something before X, the time bomb, okay? Think about what you would say in one slide about form based zoning.
Fair enough.
Executive summary for those of us that do a little part. Marion, did you have another question? Okay.
No, 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 sorry. I will.
What, the other thing that we're looking for is not just building more housing, right? But how is the process going to ensure, we can't guarantee, but, you know, gives a good chance of that housing having a fighting chance of being affordable as opposed to, because remember, location, location, location. Brookline is in high income location. And if we're not very intensive, intentional, any housing that's built is going to be what we're calling luxury.
Mr. Green, I'm glad you asked that question because one thing that I'm really passionate about is ensuring that your current robust inclusionary zoning policy under section 408 in the zoning bylaw actually gets applied. And, you know, if you don't build any housing, 15% of time zero is zero. But what will happen is that any residential project on Harvard Street will indeed have 15% affordable housing on site. And that's, that will really ensure that we can integrate diversity and have mixed income projects all throughout Harvard Street neighborhoods.
But, yeah, inclusionary zoning does have limitations.
It does.
And one of the, one of the problems I think we're seeing in Brookline is that sale and demolition of two and three family buildings were rented, they're not cheap, but they're reasonable for middle income people and replaced with the, you know, multimillion dollar cereal box. So I, I hope that there's some way of helping prevent that type of process from just overtaking everything else that we do. Because the market's out there, the market's broken, and, you know, that's going to be your result.
So from a staff perspective, I've been saying this quite often. So Maria wrote for Article 16, for example, which we might get to tonight, that is on the protective side of exactly our two and three family neighborhoods. We were seeing those tear down there. When asked, we are very nervous about in the next 12 weeks trying to come up with zoning that does anything that tinkers with the two and three family neighborhoods for that very reason. One of the reasons why we are interested in Harvard Street is because the residential that is on Harvard Street is not included two and three in the neighborhoods. Includes three and a half and four story residential buildings. And where we're headed with the zoning would likely not mean, would likely mean that all of those units will remain in place. So we're aiming for, you know, trying to be very respectful of exactly that concern of not taking down or encouraging the tear down through these next, through this single effort of any tear downs of any residential building.
And I have a follow up point from yours. Following up on Bernard's, 15 percent. So, you know, there's a couple of, a couple of challenges with our inclusionary zoning, right? I know we're gonna take it down to 10, but even at 10, I'm not sure that given the depth of, of some of these properties, these parcels and four stories, that you're actually going to hit 10 units. Developers have great ability to build something to exclude our triggers, right, to avoid our triggers. So that's the first thing. So I don't think, I think 10 is too high. I think we need to go much lower for inclusionary zoning. And then the second point is this, I, the idea that a developer can, can, can write a check to the housing trust fund. So even at 10, you know, the, the developer could say, I don't want to build the affordable units. I'd rather write a check to the housing trust fund. And we're seeing this. This actually creates luxury buildings. We've seen this across from that. The corner of High Street, Route 9. Beautiful building. I think it's an example of what we'd like to see more built in Brookline, but it's an ultra luxury building. There's not a single deep restricted unit, which is, no.
I'm sorry, yes.
They were, yeah, they were, yeah. So again, any, any, as you said, 15% of, but 15% of writing a check to the housing trust fund is housing the way.
That was a big point that we made in, in the Harvard Street study, that we wanted to see affordable housing on site. And I worked, worked for about 10 years and I've done big projects exclusively during those 10 years. And because of the land cost of Harvard Street, not you see 10 unit buildings. You're, you really are going to see really 20, 20. In order to get a return on investment, that's why I'm thrilled to do this for an Article 14. Because it, it will ensure that every project that gets, gets built on Harvard Street is going to have affordable.
I guess my, my preference would have been to see Warren Article, I don't know why we're preempting at this town meeting to bring inclusionary zoning down to 10. Why that wasn't bundled with what we're going to be approving in November when we have a better sense about what we're doing.
Yeah, you, you can't have, you can't treat the MBTCA communities differently from your other townwide.
I'm not suggesting that we do. I'm just saying that, you know, we may pass this article at this town meeting, but I'm hoping that we are willing to actually revisit inclusionary zoning as part of what the outcome of our, our form base and take community act options.
It makes sense.
Done.
Excuse me if any of these questions, either of these questions is, is basically just of historical interest, but the time will say. All relevant to what we're trying to achieve here. But I, I'm always intrigued by the fact that form based zoning assumes that there is in place something that is well worth imitating, well worth modeling. But they didn't have form based zoning back then, as far as I know, right? From a, from a historical perspective, why didn't we get imitation worthy building without having to dictate it? Whereas now we have to dictate buildings in order to get them to be.
It's a little bit of a, we left this question.
Do you, go ahead. No, I mean, we didn't have zoning.
Right.
We can go down a long, broad road about what zoning did and why it wasn't active. And, and so I, I won't do that today, but, but I do think we lived differently. We were much more comfortable living smaller and sharing uses. Right? And zoning really came up out of the time when we were shifting to auto oriented and separation of uses. And so things got put further and further. And so the building forms changed and how we lived and changed. And some of those reasons were good and well intended and some were not good, right? Some were rooted in discriminatory practices. And so those buildings that we love were predated zoning and often predated building codes. And all those things. And so there's a reality of, there's a level of craftsmanship and and technology that is all contributed, right? And so we have to recognize those changes in our society and our technology and our building industry and the way we live, but, but also look at, you know, architects, what are the pieces that we want then? And why are they successful and why are they more human scale? And those are things we can replicate. That answer your.
Well, is there, is there anywhere right now that is going so far as to suggest that maybe we can, we can turn back the clock to a, you know, zoning free, and I don't want to scare people, but zoning free, but obviously within certain parameters. And kind of leave it up to the planning department to say whether you're, what you're planning for that site is something we want. And it could be eight stories, it could be two, and it could be, you know, with no setbacks, it could be with dramatic setbacks.
Who would have given care of Maria that hunch power?
I think Mr. Karen has a good point.
I was gonna say, it's a loaded question for the planning department. I think the unfortunate answer to that is that you have an arbitrary appreciative. One of the other big things about land is that courts don't like it when you put restrictions on what landowners can and can't do. Zoning is historically accepted in the act. It came about during the suburbanization of the states. But if you just say the rule is what the planning committee says goes, then when the planning committee says no, you get sued and they'll say, well, what standards did you apply? And the standard is, did we like that building? And then the court will.
It comes to constitutional to a process that individuals who have the right to enjoy their land, but they also have to know they, they have to be able to read the standards by which those, that land is going to be regulated.
So we are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I do think, I want to note, it does come down to an issue about how our policies are equitable, right? We started with this, right? Our zoning is so convoluted and complicated that only the largest developers who have really good lawyers can make sense of it and can pay for variances and pay for a, a long process. Right? We aren't providing really equitable quality. And our work is really about simplifying the rules. The things that everybody can understand and access those same incentives and same regulations fairly, whether it's you know, a subsidized product or a luxury product, right, that they both have access and to navigate those rules. And that the community has objective design standards to look to and say, oh, that's what we said we wanted and that's what we got. Right now, we don't know what we're, we could get and so we're terrified of the possibilities because it could look any which way, right? So it's, it's really about making it easier for staff to administer and, and for projects of all kinds that come in.
The follow up question I, I wanted, I wanted to set up there is what worries me about form based zoning is that when I try to compare with anything you have right now, I immediately end, I, I, I go to 40B projects. And 40B projects are not quite as tightly controlled as other projects, but they do come under the influence of the, you know, planning board and planning department in terms of a lot of suggestions. And suggestions are a lot like what you hear should be form based zoning. You know, modeling, you know, the contact, the materials, you know, high but not too high, et cetera, et cetera, you know, in, in dense and so on. Very variations. But the 40B developments that we have are kind of okay, but imagining Harvard Street lined with nothing but 40B developments is scary. And, and yet I'm hearing we want to go to four stories where we're one story. And so a lot of them are four, five, six stories. We want to have retail on the ground floor as much as possible. A lot of them, you know, dictate retail on the ground floor and a lot of the retail space is empty. And everywhere the retail space is empty, it's a lifeless sort of a walk. So how do we not end up with Harvard Street lined with 40B projects?
Can I sort of feed back on that? My concern is that, are we talking about creating another low town, for example? Where you have that type of form, I mean, I'm sure it's not form based zoning, or a rest in Virginia.
Right. It's not cookie cutter. So I want to make it clear that that, that capping, that capping Harvard Street to four stories means that wherever we have retail, and if it's successful, it's not going to be worth demolishing that retail to build four stories. Because property owners will say it, it's already successful enough. Four stories being without that revenue for two years, it's not going to be worth it. Now, if the, if the town were to, you know, increase the zoning to high rise, six stories, there would be the temptation to do that. But we have some sections where the rents are like $90 a square foot. You're not going to be putting up a four story building. It will not be worth it. You want a high rise.
Unless, unless.
It's very personal.
Unless someone acquires the company that owns the, the building and has different priorities.
No, it's really economic. It's, the numbers, the numbers don't work.
I think the 40B question, I mean, you have to remember that we're right at the threshold, maybe nine to above. Threshold of 40B, so that is what I was saying. I was saying for, pursuing a form based zoning would end up a result that would. So that was the question, that was why I asked the question about all the forms within the district.
John, are we talking about quality of the 40Bs? Because we can do a lot better with form based zoning than what we were able to scramble for. We, we really had to claw our way to get whatever we got on those 40Bs because the town had no leverage. Here, we're able to specify materials and penetration so that you have some that's more keeping with the traditional, if that's how you want to aim. And so there's a lot more control that you can have in the zoning that you absolutely don't have when you're reacting to a 40B.
Well, so, quite good for this. So are we able to, and I think your penetration example, materials is an important one. Are we able to say that, you know, these are the three or four or five patterns that you can use and you can't, if one is, you can't have, have the same pattern that's next. I'm thinking of the Back Bay. I don't want it to look like the Back Bay, but the Back Bay was created before there was something, right? Somehow they produced that, right? And there's not a lot of replication, right? It's, it's different. And that, to me, that's form based zoning. I don't know how to, how you do that, but are we able to actually specify the types of patterns and penetration and then say that you can't, you can't replicate something that's next door to you?
The replicating that's next door to you is harder. But what we do is really look at patterns. We've studied building over time and the articulation and the composition of those. And there's a wild amount of variety in our environments. That's what makes that variety is what we love about places. It's why we walk, like, the places that we love are interesting. And so we've studied and we codify those different patterns. And so our architectural standards do just that. It lays out a page of appropriate patterns and rhythms and says you can do anything within this. And, and it's a balance. There's no perfect system, right? But it's a balance between allowing flexibility. Right? So that you're respecting the cost and, and giving that variety to architects and developers. But also giving predictability. And so it's really about providing all of those options that are within this appropriate range and then allowing variations within it. And we will get that.
We, we do, in our, in our zoning, we, you know, we have distances for businesses. You can't have a business within a certain distance of another business. That's a simple. Can you do that with, can you do that with form based?
But then let's wrap this up. We have another item that's going to take a lot of time on our agenda. But, you know, answer his questions and I think Mike has a question.
No, I, I, I have an explanation to follow.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't need to answer the question. It's a question that I, you know, if there's a way to build that pattern. And so I'm sorry, I think it solves the problem that has been raised all four years.
This is not a public hearing, but Regina wants to ask a question. I'll allow it.
I do. Not an economist, but I did study with Dr. Carcase, who you probably know.
We'll stipulate on your expertise.
I can do.
We'll stipulate on your expertise. Just ask the question.
Well, I took a course. Did you? It's expert enough for that. And you can't build a affordable housing usually in a three story. You have to do a four story. You know, that's true, right? So I, what I think I was hearing, because there's a lot of misinformation that would keep everything the same. You can't if you're going to add the affordability component. Unless you do the micro units, which I thought I was hearing implicit in what you were saying. Is that correct?
We talk a lot about incentivizing smaller units, right? When we talk about affordability or attainability, right? Allowing multifamily, allowing more units on the same size parcel does, you know, whether it's actually affordable to a certain AMI. Does, you know, whether it's actually affordable to a certain AMI, that's a, that's a comfort conversation, right? That does take some financial pressure, but the baseline of allowing smaller units and allowing them in walkable transit-rich locations, right? Is a big, is a big piece of how you get.
That goes to John Mansfield's concerns, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting. And you're going to give us some BS slides?
Yes.
So, um, we'll study and digest.
I apologize. You know, you had to read this.
Well, we're always open to.
I apologize, but I know.
And I just wanted to say we are going to follow up the follow-up statement about the same but different.
Thank you, two of you.
Thank you all. Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, next, Warren article, that means Warren article two. Warren article two is kind of subsumed into Warren article seven. We don't need to take a vote. We've already taken that vote yesterday. So I think if we move on to Warren article seven, if that's right. Debbie, can I share my screen? I apologize. This is in your packet, but it was a late edition. It's like moments, moments before the meeting. We'll get you better guys. The, uh, this memo to you about how to reconcile the budget. We talked about it yesterday. You voted to fully fund two different contracts, one for the JLC, one for the police, one for the fire department. And we talked about how to cover both the retro pay in one-time, one-time funds and the ongoing expense. And we indicated that we had a solution on the retro pay. But in talking to you about whether to approve these times, whether to approve prior contract, there was a question of how to fund it. And so you gave direction to what executive session? That direction was to avoid permanent position cuts and retain all promised override restorations and new programs. And find a way to balance the budget with those two constraints. We think we have that. We think we have that in a way that works for FY24. And is going to, I think, require us in November, December to have some, you know, tough conversations as part of, or potentially tough conversations as part of your budget sum about how these priorities fit into your long-term planning. But in terms of the immediate term, for the purposes of this town meeting, funding this and ensuring that we have a balanced budget. This is the kind of, these are the items that we've identified. So as we discussed, right, the, the one-time funding will be from the collective bargaining reserve fund and unused portions of certain ARPA accounts. We have, we'll get a vote to you on that for next week. We want to get the specific balances in two ARPA accounts we want to use from, so there's a vote in front of you on that. And again, that's for projects that have come in under budget. And the two projects there are the utility repayment project and the the, what we call the CARES Act continuation budget. Basically, the budget for projects that we were worried that we wouldn't get reimbursed for with prior federal sources of funds. It turns out, thanks to the prudence of this team that was here long before I was, that they were very good at getting the money reimbursed and declared we did our proper, so we need less of that money at the fall. So that's a positive outcome. That covers your one-time expenses. For ongoing expenses, we have about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars to address in fiscal year 24. Our recommendation to you is modifications to certain sources of money in departmental budgets that will allow you to balance the budget for this year. State aid, as Mariah said in her comment, when we discussed at the town school partnership on May fifteenth, there's currently a discrepancy between the governor's budget, which is our projection source, and the Senate ways and needs for how much state aid Brooklyn will receive. There's an additional two hundred and ninety, about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars discrepancy there. Using that towards the collective bargaining balance would go a long way towards addressing that million-dollar hole. It does require taking that money, quote unquote, above the line, which is to say ordinarily that money would go through the town school split. You would say in this instance that this, as a, you know, an item not to be repeated, but as a matter of exigency in addressing these unplanned overages, this year, that discrepancy flow through state aid. For group health, we anticipate pretty significant group health savings. This is not setting stone, but we have a conservative projection that indicates that we will get around four hundred thousand dollars coming out of group health savings, even though group health costs increased because our plans all change. People drop in the programs that actually cost less, even though the overall cost of all the programs went up. So effectively, because people, our employees went to different plans that cost less, even though the total cost of the group health went up, we, we went down because of the savings from their switching to different plans. When we budget for things, generally, we don't budget for rolling implementation, right? We say over the course of the year, it's going to cost us X to do this. So for the salary study, the override, what we said was it's going to cost us this year three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that really does assume that we start on day one and we may, and we, you know, are expending this money right away. If we are, which, you know, we have to, we just rolling this out more gradually, starting with social workers, that's actually going to be before the HR board at the end of this month. And then kind of moving down the list of folks who we know are out of alignment. We recognize savings because we're not making those changes retroactively, we're making them on a prospective basis. So we anticipate realizing about fifty thousand dollars in salary savings just from that rollout. The reason why we don't ordinarily budget that that way, and I'll get into this in more detail, is because that does limit ultimately than the flexibility to use that funding for free cash later. For the remainder of these are, are what we call salary savings. Salary savings are either realizing savings now positions we believe we are not going to fill over the course of this year, or realizing savings from positions where we think that where we built the position, but with someone who's in a lower step. For example, if someone departed at step twelve, we hired someone in a new role at step three, we reckon we got some savings there. We tend to not realize that and we put that into free cash at the end of the year and, you know, or, or, you know, that who lives in the departmental budget. So that there is some flexibility on the departmental side to do that kind of thing. So in a couple of cases, we have those circumstances. Those tend to be one-off events that we can't kind of control for. But in a couple of instances, we have those, those savings that we're going to realize here. And the others are more, you know, in the same way that advisory balanced their initial budget by claiming salary savings on the police side. We have identified hundred thousand dollars in the police department, fifty thousand dollars in the building department, thirty thousand dollars in the accessories office, and fifty thousand dollars across two departments of works, forty thousand in parks and ten thousand in transportation for salary savings there. And then ODICR, the rolling implementation of the language access program, similarly to the rolling implementation of salary study, will save us, we estimate approximately thirty thousand dollars. So all of that, that gets you one million, seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars on that balanced budget.
Congratulations.
Rolling your implementation means delay, basically. Yes.
So one question, kind of strange that employees are more into upline for the cheaper.
Again, yeah, it's, it's, it's not necessarily that they're, doesn't mean that their quality of service is any less. It just means that group, are members of the kind of group health consortium, you know, the consortium is taxed with exactly these issues, knowing the healthcare costs are going up, going back out to bid and saying, who's going to give us, you know, the same quality of service I'll give for someone less. And so effectively, you know, we used to have.
So it's a top-spoil award.
Right.
And the plans that remain are less extended.
Right. They're not, when they're not one-to-one, they provide a similar level of service, saving less cost. So, I mean, I just want to be clear, you know, right? Like I said, this strategy is inherently a temporary one. And it's outside of the typical way we tend to budget. You know, Boston is very, you know, Melissa will tell you how to get out of that space. Boston is very big into, you know, putting salary savings upfront and saying this all come back to the center at the end, and that's how we deal with it. No, we're not filling these positions, so we're very clear on what the budget needs. In Brooklyn, historically, we've given departments more leeway. I think as we've discussed, you know, it's, and, you know, one of the things that I discussed in when I first got here in terms of, you know, talking through, moving through this year's budget, as kind of the last amendment, so it's, is that we need to, you know, as part of this, take a look at, you know, we can potentially recognize savings in departmental budgets and saying, you know, there's, there's often, you know, people say, well, you know, do things for the sake of doing, you know, because we've always done it that way. There's sometimes there's very good reasons for that, but sometimes it's just there. And we really need to hire some of these projects to make sure that we are not leaving money in the table here. So that's a big effort on that end. Sorry, Matt.
So I just appreciate that this looks very good, actually. And it's, it conforms to what we talked about, and I'm really very pleased that we're not going to have to chop into what we promised people in the override. But it's pretty likely that it's going to have an effect on free cash at the end of the year.
So you have, and we should not expect a bumper year of free cash like last year. We're going to have much less to work with and we are not, we're likely not going to, you know, we have less, we're going to less to play around with in November. We're going to, you know, historically, there's the expectation in the community that, oh, you know, we're going to have some getting revenue overages. The state's view is that the party is old. Revenue is going to drop. And it's going to drop everywhere.
State revenue.
Yeah, well, state revenue is going to drop, but local revenue, the state thinks, the state thinks that the economic conditions are flashing red across the board.
So.
Yes, well, also local revenue, national state taxes, it's depending on the way it's lived. Okay, the state's, the state's.
Permanent.
Yeah, totally. Yeah. The reason why we get a bumper year in free cash was the utility payoff and, and a big market for it.
Yeah.
We may not have that this year.
And, and free cash is such a terrible term.
Yes. It's neither free nor cash.
Yeah. You know, it's a missed opportunity, free cash.
Well, it's not necessarily, I mean, it's money that you.
We intentionally try and generate and support our CIP.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
So we're acknowledging that we're likely going to generate less and CIP will be the fair part of these.
Right, that's, that's what I'm thinking is that the capital improvements budget will be hit hardest because that's where the cash comes from. Yeah, it's getting tight.
Okay, so I have a vote language for you if you want. So you could send this forward to advisory for their consideration next Tuesday so it can be ready to vote on Wednesday. I know it will be voted to propose a recommendation of a vote of favorable action on an amendment to Warren Article Seven, the form and substance conveyed in the table attached to the Union Contract Budget Reconciliation Memorandum dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Those tables are in the packet. It just reflects, you know, if across the full budget, the changes made here at this town.
And we'll be dealing with that piece of Warren Article Seven.
Can you address the question raised by Mariah in the comments?
Which, which question? Sorry.
Well, she, she, I think is saying, is signaling that the community is not going to be happy with the approach towards the additional.
Right. So I think what she said, and, you know, is, is similar to the remark made at Town School Partnership on the fifteenth, which is, if we're doing this, then this process needs to be codified as part of the reevaluation of revenue split. It can't just be a reactive thing. Going forward, they're needing clear rules on when either the schools or the town gets to do this.
Yeah, we talked about that ourselves. We said, okay, we have to put in place a set of standards. It's not one, when something goes, is scooped above the, above the lines, we can say.
Okay, anything else?
No, let's have.
I want to, I want to thank, sorry. No, I have to thank Charlie and Melissa for, you know, just pulling, you know, wherever possible to pick this up. Thank you.
But wait, we're voting tonight on?
So the, the language again is.
And that's going to be given to you.
Yes. So the language is to propose a recommendation of a vote of favorable action on an amendment to Warren Article Seven and the form and substance conveyed in the table attached to the Union Contract Budget Reconciliation Memorandum dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, for the record, I said that, and I'm ruled approval. And Susan Gabe is saying aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair both aye. Okay. That's it.
We have, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You actually have one more Warren article. I wanted to make sure that we covered it because you had, you put Article fifteen on. Last night, I remember I talked about the issue of the building code, the stretch, or the ten tenants. Again, it's still, you know, is, is, should be coming shortly. Unfortunately, he's still recovering from surgery, but I want to make sure that he has an opportunity to speak, but I, I have spoken to him and Karen Bruton this afternoon. The current recommendation from staff is that you do not alter the language. The language that's currently before you that you voted in favor of action on is the modified language that is developed in the constitution of the advisory. The reason for that is that DOER has not finalized. It's only issued proposed language to further the community's consideration.
Does advisory deal with this issue yet?
No, they'll deal with it next, they'll leave it on the next Tuesday. But the recommendation on that is stay in the course, stay with the modified language and.
Chad, I'm not sure if that's correct anymore.
Oh, is it? Karen, I'm sorry. I didn't notice you were still here. I'm very busy. My fault.
No, no, your conclusion is still the same. I thought I heard the phrase that the state hasn't finalized their guidance.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's what you said, but that was what I was finding. They have finalized their guidance language. However, our, here's Dan, but he's going to talk to you about some of the concerns that we all share about that recently released guidance language and how it squares with the Eastern Building Code. So we want what you've already voted in the past town meeting. We are working with other communities that have similar differences from the language that was released last week. We'll work through it. It's very likely we'll come back in the fall along with other communities for some adjustments. But Chad, I think you wanted to mostly have Dan explain the confusion of the state of code.
Before we have to answer, because you just said something that's different than what he said. So, so I heard Chad say, we want to revert back to the original language. And the language that we adopted was a modified language that dealt with, you know, this, this multifamily fifty-one percent trigger. And you're, I use, that's where we want to stay. We want to stay where it is because we have big problems.
The only difference is they do have the guidance out, but we're not ready to.
Yes, we're pretty aware that the language that hopefully somebody in the past is not square completely, following the definitions that was released last week. We're not panicking. We're moving forward with other communities. We think we have to come back in the fall to adjust, but I think.
Okay, good to have Dan on the.
Yeah, again, if you want to just drive in on this February, thank you.
Hi. Dan Bennett, building commissioner. So I've been involved in the three different versions, I guess, what you would say with respect to this model code. The original definition referred us back to two twenty-five, CMR twenty-two and twenty-three. Our interpretation on that created some concern with the full advisory committee in the way that it impacted or could impact condominiums, and that would be low-rise condos. And, you know, a low-rise condo with, you know, six units, if they renovated more than fifty percent of their specific unit, it was our interpretation that that unit would have to come into, you know, full compliance with the energy code. That became problematic for, for the advisory. We stepped back with the subcommittee and planning staff, Paul Campbell and myself. And we worked a new definition, or a new definition was proposed. That definition, which is what I think is still on the table, changes the, the major renovation to fifty percent. You have to do a fifty, renovate more than fifty percent of the aggregate area of the entire building. So in a condo like that, a six-unit condo or a high-rise, that wouldn't get triggered. The, the most recent model code, you know, definition that came out by DOER, a little late in the game because two or three communities, maybe four, have already adopted definitions, their own, very similar to what we've done, and they're going to move forward. So I think at this point between, you know, planning staff, Tom Barasso, Jonathan Simpson, and, and maybe even the subcommittee, I don't recall how some of these decisions were made. We felt that it was best to just stick with The the definition we have now, which is the second definition, it's the town. We'll call it the town-made, you know, definition. That would be a fifty percent trigger. Um, of the. Uh, work area of the aggregate of the building area. So I hope that. Kind of explains it for you. And uh, it 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 certainly makes it easier. For us to some degree, because there's not a whole bunch of what-ifs and and how-fors. And the new definition was, the the DOER definition. Had a lot of inconsistencies with the stretch code definition. Uh, they took out an or and added an and, and they limited a lot of this to a thousand square feet, and there were some just. Some things that while I said it didn't, it wouldn't, I don't think it would change my opinion on our. Homemade definition versus theirs. Um, it might be too late in the game to go and change this, and it might create havoc. At town meeting.
So the guidance is. Stick with what we have already approved. We don't need to read the center.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, any other questions, John?
Yes, uh, it falls on me to present the select board's recommendation. Which I intended would end with. Uh. As follows, and then you will find in the. Generally combined reports. The language that we are recommending in the vote. Is that still true, or is there?
Okay. Okay.
Just one, just one more thing, too. I'm not sure, um, there is a waiver provision in there that I can. Uh, waive, you know, some of these requirements, and then someone can appeal it to the ZB, to the um. The select board. I'm not sure if you guys were notified of that, and I did ask. But uh, so that's, that's a process that I think um, communities wanted to have. Because it, nobody's sure right now. What the appeal process is for the energy code, whether it goes to DOER or if it goes to BBRS. So for the short term, we'll do it internally and then see where the larger picture, you know, plays out.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to um.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for great meetings.
So uh, next island is board information. We have one um, applicant, uh, is that an interview or?
Do you have two applicants who interviewed before you over the four days weeks? Uh, Carol Carol did reach out to me today. She is not applying for reappointment. So there are now two vacancies on the commission for women. Um. You have the opportunity to reappoint. Two members who have applied for reappointment, um, and I can get that information for you. It should be in your. Um. On bits. Uh. As well as the women who applied. They have both uh, spoken with the chair of the commission for women, and she has expressed her support in their.
Okay. Pardon me?
Miriam, did you have your hand raised?
Well, I did, but I I think, so basically, we can appoint both the women that we interviewed. And we can reappoint both the people that want to be reappointed, so everybody gets.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna vote on that now?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
I didn't see that.
So this is Cynthia?
So I'm gonna show you um, the live version of the packet, which uh, folks following along at home can find online. Um, when I click on Commission for Women down here, we have the summary. Uh, which shows you the the women who are coming up for reappointment, as well as the two vacancies. And then here. Want to take the new appointments first?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, so that is Cynthia Armfeld and Julia Kazan, and those would be three-year terms.
Okay, I'm all um, approval of the appointment of Cynthia. Armset? Arm, Arm.
Armfeld.
And Julie Ivan. Um, to the uh, commission for women. Uh, on favor, who's indicated by saying aye. John?
Aye.
Um, Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair both aye. And then the reappointments are.
Aileen Lee?
The Aileen, Aileen Lee?
And Lucy Chi.
Okay, I'm all approval uh, for a reappointment to the commission for women of Aileen. So I think Lee, okay, and um, and Cynthia Chi. Uh, on favor, who's indicated by saying aye. Pardon, Lucy Chi. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, and he gave by saying aye, uh, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair both aye. Okay. We address that ends the meeting.
All right, I'll be late again to town meeting, but I'll see you there as soon as I can get there.